All right, I'm showing six o'clock, so we will go ahead and call for order. I'm supposed to do that after I say, huh? The city council business meeting of February 11th, 2025 to order. If you would, uh, yes, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get a roll call, please?
That's one.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Rude.
Yes.
Steven.
Here.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I will move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Ronnie. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a quick roll call on that, please.
Conley.
Yeah.
Daniel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Rude.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of January 28th.
I move to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2025.
And then a second.
Motion by Councilmember Ronnie, second by Councilmember Tupin. Any discussion at the table, please? Hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Conley.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Rude.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion regarding warrants payable.
I was highlighting my map over here.
You're coloring.
I am coloring. I will make a motion to approve warrants payable for the amount totaling to 163,944.79 cents.
All right, so I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Ronnie. Discussion at the table.
So just a few notes of big expenditures that we had. I don't know, this is one of our lighter ones. Yeah. Um, so there's not, the biggest expenses seen was Republic Services, Northwest Energy, and then Great West Engineering. Um, but nothing too astronomical, so.
Any other questions?
I had some questions just because I was unfamiliar. On the first page, under monthly charges for mountain alarm, I see four different, um, payments for a security system at the library, which adds up to, you know.
Yeah, so they have cameras, they have their main security one, um, they have panic buttons now, um, for all the clerks there. Um, and then the other one was a not unusual one, um, they have like a service, um, or something.
Well, I was kind of laughing that they've got like 1,500 and the city hall has $67.
Eighty-seven, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then I saw on page four, it has a city hall alarm as well for 66.33.
That's for the phones, for the phone to be connected to the system to like do callouts and stuff, that's what that one is.
Oh, it's not the same as the alarm.
No, one is the actual alarm company, the other one is the actual phone line that we have to have for the system.
And just a reminder to everybody at the table, if you do your outside voices for those that are online or in the chambers.
And on page eight, there is a $4,187, um, overspent expenditure for water rights assistance.
Yeah, and that was for the public works director, I forgot to ask him, um, to give me a little bit more background on that one. But it has to do with the city's water rights and there was, did he talk to you about that?
It's not ringing a bell.
But we had to, we had to have outside assistance to get building that.
Yeah, so we, this is, is that tied to doing our, to do, okay, so, so we have a permit that expired after 20 years. And so we had a choice of either, so it's what, for our, it's the main water for the city system. And you recall, we mentioned this because we could either close it out, but if we did that, we locked in a water amount that we could pull from it. So the recommended action, outside council to guide us through that, was to extend it for another 20 years, which means it'll be done. But it also doesn't cap us into the top of how much water we're allowed to use.
And so we use the WGM group to give us that information.
That's who handled that.
And that was the surprising.
Thank you, Ronnie.
And the other thing was the legal services for HR investigation.
That was the HR.
That was the one that you guys approved for, uh, back in January when we had an HR issue, we need to hire outside counsel to do an investigation.
Oh, and they investigated the clerk and the mayor, water and sewer.
I would, yep, all of those things. So it was, it was, it was a cross-departmental investigation, so we paid for it from multiple departments.
Okay, I was just curious. I haven't seen those before.
And hopefully you won't see them again. Thank you. Any other questions from the table?
Has that HR issue been resolved?
It has. There was, I thought we had, had given it a count, but I'll do it. So it was resolved, there were no issues. There were some recommendations and we are following through with the recommendations, which is basically some general HR training and stuff that is always a good idea.
Okay.
Um, those have not taken place yet, but we are, um, following all of the input, yeah, all of, all of the suggestions and recommendations they gave us, we are following.
Excellent.
All right, and just a reminder for the public that's online, there is always a copy of those warrants payable right here in the entryway as you come in, so the public is always welcome to come in and look and review those as well. And reach out to your council or, or to me or the front office. Probably the best is probably to reach out to council and they can have specific questions on that. Uh, every, every dollar we spend is well-trapped and you're allowed to ask and inquire on any and all of it, so please feel free to do so. All right, any other discussion at the table on warrants payable? Hearing none, let's go ahead and get a motion or a vote, please.
Conley.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Rude.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, mayor's report. Um, first off, I just want to start out with a, a public shout out to our public works department on their snow clearing.
Yeah.
Um, and, and particularly Rob, if you see, if you see him out and about or any of that team, um, please, it's, I, I, I hear about it daily, and, and there's still some comments and concerns. Um, our public works director is doing a follow-up with M D O P regarding, um, snow getting on the sidewalks along Broadway if they're going fast and flipping up there. So there's a, there's a conversation that's taking place there.
Appreciate it.
Um, there's, there is some, uh, some questions and comments that have come about up on berms and we're working on some writing. They're, they, they do make a, a very deliberate effort to not create berms, but unfortunately it is a byproduct of snow. Um, we've, we've looked at the language that a lot of the other municipalities have and we just haven't worked it and finalized and posted that online yet. So we'll get that posted online. Um, we'll wait and talk about the other snow there. The other thing I wanted to share is we had run an ad for police commission. We had a couple of positions that we had identified as expiring. It turns out it was another one of those where what we had online did not match. In this particular case, the state ordinance was, if the state law, uh, code on it is three years. However, it is one of those places where our local municipal code can override it and our code says four years back from the eighties. So at the time we copied to match the state, they've since changed it to three, but because ours is there, we're still at four years. So the two individuals that were there will still continue to fill that out. And I would leave that, um, probably to public health and safety if you guys want to add that to the agenda. If you want to consider taking up changing it so that we're three years in line with the, with the state, that would not affect anybody in the current positions because everybody appointed was appointed for a four-year position. But as we reappoint people next year, um, something for you guys to consider if we want to be in line with the state again or if we're fine with the four years. And there's, there's not a right or wrong, it's just the preference of council, yeah. Um, so anyway, that's why you're not seeing appointments for, for police commission on the agenda. Um, we just got the Brewery Hill update that we were waiting for. I anticipate it will be posted this week online. Uh, the reason it has not been posted yet is the last time we got that Brewery Hill update in, uh, when we went through and reviewed it, there were several contradictions and issues and it was kind of a first draft, but it was a little too rough to put up online. I believe those have been taken care of now, but I do want to get a chance to look at that and verify before we post that. Um, and, uh, we will, um, have a, a resolution coming up basically to adopt it, um, once that's out there. Um, I might be inclined, if, I guess I get a little feel from council, if you guys feel, um, comfortable having that up for action to adopt that and, and do it, um, my, my inclination is put that on the agenda accordingly. If you guys feel you need two weeks, you'll always have the option to, to push it back two weeks if you want an additional two weeks. But are any objections to having that be for action if we can get that posted this week?
No, I think that would be, I'm good with that. I'm uncomfortable, is that your answer?
And like I said, if, if we see that there are concerns and issues that are there, um, then, then we'll, we'll build that timeframe into it. But, but there is an April deadline to review it, so, so, um, that basically, uh, what we would have is, is, is a resolution to basically adopt that report is prepared and permission to apply. Um, at the point that we were awarded that, if we should be successful in that, um, there would be another resolution at that point is when we would make the, we would be discussing the financial match, which is in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars for a 1.7 million dollar project. And then, and then we could take that into account and work with the budgeting at that point. Questions on that? I'll try to get that up before the end of the week.
Excellent.
All right, airport update. Um, so a couple of things on the airport. Um, our, our airport consultant has, had given us some materials and when I inquired as to why we don't have the rest of them, he had submitted them to the FAA basically to get their approval as well as their guidance on what we need to do to close out so that we don't owe any additional dollars for the, the money they spent on that. Um, I think everybody is aware that the, the airport was not accepted into the federal portion of the AIP program. However, one of the reasons that we had done that application is when we had gone to the state for the AIP dollars before, they said, "Don't come to us until you've gone to the Fed." We went to the state AIP this year and made a request for $320,000 to repave everything that's not being paid by the $400,000 grant that was paying being the runway. We got $318,000 out of that 320 ask. So, so they, so basically everything will be, everything will be paved up there. And, and interesting enough, that's out of the AIP dollars, they just didn't adopt us into the program. So we're still part of the, of the NPIA system. Um, so, but I think we have all of the parts now to come up with the wording for our road policy and also for the inter-local agreement. So, um, I'm working with the county, with the airport, with, with Brian, um, trying to come up with the, the wording for that. So I'm hoping that we can get that wrapped up in the, in the next couple of months and, and put that behind us. But it, there's a lot of that that kind of played out that we were waiting for and it's played out, so.
Is the survey that was done last year going to be approved or is that going to be changed?
By the survey, you mean the boundaries?
The boundaries that were, yeah.
I have a, a proposal that I, that I'd like to bring to the group, um, to, as, as we have the inter-local and stuff that, that we, we can come in, but that basically depends on council. So council certainly has the option of saying, "No, we want to go with what was, what was done before." Okay, um, having said that, when we did that boundary, it's not been accepted by anybody else. Ultimately, I think it's, we get to say that, but I think it's part of the comprehensive discussion about what other development we want to go in and how it works. And we do have some recommendations from our, from our airport and we've talked about it in the past as far as basically following the roads around on the north, east, and south sides, and then the, the fence post to fence post, corner post on the west side. Um, I do have a copy of that if you were not, if you weren't in one of the meetings that we shared it in today.
Well, I saw it today, but I, I knew that, that, that varied from the survey that was done.
Well, the survey wasn't done, it was just, uh, this is what we want to have surveyed. So a survey has not been done yet.
Correct, okay.
Um, so, so yeah, so that'll be part of that discussion.
Okay.
Um, and, and council will be very much involved in that. But like I said, hopefully it's a, it's a collective program that says, we're, we're protecting the perpetuity of the airport, we're protecting the ability for the city to go in and utilize the pieces of land there and including on the airport property, um, meaning, you know, inside that space. Um, also to protect the easements that are there, there's a couple of trails, there's some utilities. There's the road easements that are actually 60 feet, 30 feet on either side of the center. So there's some other things that we want to protect that weren't incorporated into that, that we're trying to get everything in there.
Wow.
So, um, the only other thing on the airport that's kind of fun is there's a reseating project going to be happening on Mount Maurice sometime in the next week or two.
Cool.
Um, and they are, they're basically going up and seeding all of that so that it, the seat is on top of the snow and when it melts, it'll theoretically keep the mountain from sloughing down and filling up backyards and stuff. And so that's one of those projects that they're facing out of our airport because of proximity to it, so that's kind of a fun story, too.
They're doing it by air?
They are doing it by air, yeah. Now, there's a guy going up there with a stick and a seed.
Well, I could just see the helicopter and the scene of flying.
I think, I think it's a big swing operation, um, but when they, when they get out here, then, then we'll know. I just, I just know they had reached out and wanted to know, "Hey, can we use it?" It's like, yep.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that was kind of exciting. That to me is one of those things that kind of demonstrates community.
And the use of airports, yeah.
Yeah, and use of it, so.
Good.
All right, any questions other than that? All right, um, some, some heads up for future meetings. At our next meeting in February, um, let me back up and I won't steal any thunder from the, from the working committee, but they had Tim come and give a present, presentation from the fire um, today to the standing committee meeting, and we have Tom scheduled to come to our next meeting. And it's kind of to address some of the public questions and concerns after Los Angeles and, and parts of that that are very real and, and, and could impact us. So just to get a fair and accurate understanding of that. And then also, um, he may talk a little bit about, we have been in conversations, discussions about how to address what our fire services are costing from the city and, and a couple of ideas to kind of, to be working that direction, hopefully to get it resolved before we get to, to budget time. Um, some, some different ideas and, um, there, we're, it's, it's an interesting conversation because to one extent, they kind of have us between a, a rock and a hard place. I don't think we're in a position to, to really call their bluff and say, "The city's going to take on its own fire services and we'll go out and buy three fire trucks and, and just take it on our own."
Sure.
Um, but, but the good news is, um, I feel very much like they were being good partners and they have basically the same customers we do. So I said, I think we'll get there, but it's, it's an interesting, an ongoing conversation. Um, the first March meeting, while we're kind of looking ahead and just kind of general public announcement, um, and we'll be making this announcement tomorrow at, at planning board as well, they're already aware of it. as well, they're already aware of it. The county property over kitty corner there, Willow's, is that the right name for it?
Cedarwood.
Cedarwood, thank you. They are putting together a development plan right now to start the demolition and then, and then rebuild the new complex that will be all county services in one building. They asked if we wanted to buy a justice building, but I think it's a few years before we get to have that conversation, but it was interesting.
Well, they take a contract for deed.
Yeah, yeah. So it'll, just by way of information, and they are going to come and do a presentation on that on March 11th, so they'll have some kind of high-level visioning on that. Planning Board is not involved with Phase One, which is the demolition.
Yep.
But their, their plan is to have the whole development stage, which is two, three and four, it's kind of like a three-stage development. They'll have that all done when they come and get their conditional use permit to the planning board.
Cool.
But we've already reached out and coordinated with Planning Board leadership to make sure what's, what's involved and so they've already worked with our building inspector and at this point, everything is pretty, I think that the stuff that they're doing right now, the demolition doesn't really involve us or Planning Board, either one, but I think it's beneficial to the community to have a high-level understanding of what's coming and what's happening down there.
What's the price of the admin building?
So that'll be March 11th. I'm not writing the check, so I can't give you that answer.
I'm just curious.
And I don't know that they're completely.
Because I'm like, I'm like, you know?
I don't know that they're completely, that they're completely done with it either.
Yeah.
So I think some of that is changing.
Yeah.
So they'll build, that's where the Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three comes in.
Okay.
We'll all get to pay for it, but we'll pay for it in little chunks on the property taxes.
No, I, I know, but you just said, they offered it to the city.
Oh, oh, the just, the justice building?
Which is the justice building?
The, the, where the court is right now?
The courthouse?
Oh, I thought they meant the admin building.
No, 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 that's where you threw me with.
I did too, you mean the courthouse.
The courthouse building.
The old, old courthouse.
Yeah, that was that.
Gee, thanks.
Anyway, it's like, it was like, give back with me.
Yeah.
So, it, it, but it was, it was a realization that there are going to be a couple of county properties that will, at some point in the future.
Be available.
Possibly not be used for the county purposes anymore.
You could rent a jail.
All right, this week, we plan on getting the trash RFP out, so we talked a little bit about it in the standing committee meeting. You guys had a copy of it with kind of the latest and edits. We did some working on the scaling, but just, that's not something that council has to approve to go, but given that you guys will ultimately approve the contract, I wanted to give you guys opportunity to have anything that you think we need to be considering that isn't there. And so if that comes up a little bit later. Also, we will be putting out an RFP for attorney services. We're going to split that into two pieces, so we'll have a prosecutor and we'll have the city, the side of that. And in both of those cases, the, both with Republic and with, with our current attorney, they will be invited to submit on both of those, but so will everybody else. The end of the month, I will be attending a mayor's conference up in Helena. This is, this is when they put together specifically for mayors and city managers, there's a couple of different tracks there. One of my goals coming back from there is to have finalized that deputy administrative officer for the city, that kind of open position that we've been carrying while we looked at it for the year and kind of finalized what that looks like. I've got a fairly fleshed-out job description of what that is and I hope by the time we come back from there, any questions that are left open will be asked and then that would be a, a job posted, we post sometime after that as well. And then the last day of that, we will be meeting with the legislators. So if there's anything other than that stuff that we're already walking on that you, you know, we're watching and monitoring on a regular, ongoing basis, just let me know and I can do that.
There's so much.
There's a, there's, there's a lot of stuff.
Do you want to get into other stuff besides cities or?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah.
No, I would like to, I would like to limit it to the cities that we have a vested interest in.
Okay.
Now, having said that, property taxes impact us at the city level too and how they do that, so.
They do. And the mill.
And then the other one I kind of already mentioned, there's going to be some potential things, so like the EDA, we got approved on that. We're still waiting for a couple of things, the timing may necessitate that we bring that stuff to council, like for action. My hope is that we've talked and stuff about it enough to, if, if we can make it happen this year versus next year by bringing it forward to meetings, I'll propose that. Again, reminding council that you have the objection, the object, option of saying, "We want to push that two weeks." But there may be some things from timing, just because everything, we've been waiting, 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 and if it busts loose all at once, if I feel we've talked it to death and we just need to go with the action, we may bring that with, just on the agenda.
Just one.
And then, like I said, that's where council has the option to say, "No, we want two more weeks to do it." So, all right, I think that's all the comments I have. Anything, other questions for me or notes I need to make or? All right, hearing none, thank you. At this point, what we'll do is we will open it for public comment. We'll start in the chamber. We have two public comment blocks. This one, ideally, we will focus on things that are on the agenda, although as we go through and discuss things on the agenda, it's also been our practice to allow an option for, for, yeah, for comments from the public at that point. But the rules are on the, on the pulpit or on the side of the wall for those of you online. Basically, you'll have three minutes, start by stating your name, direct your comments to the chair, everybody else will eavesdrop and listen in. And remember, that's not a Q and A, that's just the opportunity to be heard by the council will make notes and, and respond and follow up accordingly. But with that, I will go ahead and open the meeting for public comment. We'll first look in the chamber. Seeing nothing there, we'll go online. I always start with people that have cameras on. Roger, did you, did you want to comment or you're just, just letting us see your pretty face?
My pretty face.
All right. Any other, any other online? Going once? Twice? Three times? Hearing none, we will go ahead and close public comment. All right, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3679. If the motioner would please make sure to include the title in the motion for the record.
I move to approve Resolution 3679, reimbursement, resolution for proposed water system improvement, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Do you get that?
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Tupin. Lonnie, before we go to the general discussion at the table, would you like to give us just a summary? I know we talked about this last week, but in your outside voice?
Yes. So this resolution came from our bond council. What this allows the city to do is that any kind of expenditures that we have had relating to the water projects, whether it be the water, the 16-inch water main or the water rehab project, it gives us the opportunity to get reimbursed by the, by the bonds, so.
And the added benefit of that is that the bonds are going to come with 50% forgiveness. So all of those services will basically get perhaps price.
So, so that, this is allowing us to ask for that reimbursement within the bond.
Comments, questions from the table?
I still don't like the word "pre-pacing."
It's still a real word, we looked it up.
I ran, I ran it on Google today and basically what you're doing is replacing, so why not just use replacing? Does it mean something different?
Council is welcome to make a motion if they, if they would like to.
There was no definition when I did pre-pacing in Google. And, and basically, the system says to installing a new 16-inch main to provide a booster system bypass, pre-placing asbestos cement water mains with PVC water mains. That's replacing, why, why are we using pre-pacing?
Motion is, council is welcome to make a motion if they would like to do so.
I would move that we're, that we're a little more direct so that everybody doesn't have to look up this word.
I don't think that's true.
When really what we're doing is replacing.
I'm looking it up right now.
I couldn't find it on Google, so.
Can you form your motion in a, in the, in the national format?
I move to strike pre-pacing asbestos under 2.01 official intent declaration and put in the word "replacing," which is a direct, exactly what we're going to.
So we're going to replace the asbestos?
We're going to replace the asbestos cement water mains with PVC water mains.
There is a motion on the floor from Councilmember Conley, do I hear a second?
Everybody likes pre-pacing. Did you find it?
Motion fails for lack of a second, thank you.
Okay.
All right, back to the main motion.
Government.
Let's go read a movement, let's double check.
Any other questions on, on the document? Hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Fine.
Yes. Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
I'm going to go with motion passes even if I'm not quite sure how one of those. Motion passes. All right, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3680, if motioner would please state the resolution name.
I move to approve Resolution 3680, a resolution of the Red Lodge City Council declaring the city's intention to work with state disaster and emergency services to apply for flood mitigation funds through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for properties that were impacted by the June 2022 flooding event concerning the properties collectively known as Eagles' Nets.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley and I didn't hear the second, was it Daniels or Ronnie? Second from Councilmember Ronnie. I will leave the discussion, just to share it, so in your packet, you have now the completed application. Again, before we get to a point of committing any funds, there would be an additional motion required that would require council's approval. This is just permission to initiate the process and, and begin. I was in contact with the landowner this week who was heading out to see, so not able to attend tonight, but he is aware that we have this on the agenda tonight and so we are good to go. So anyway, that's, that's what I have.
And Eagles is misspelled in the title.
What? Oh, it sure is.
Yep. Sorry.
Is it spelled like that one newscaster did for the team?
Oh, yeah. Exactly. E L S.
I'll, I'll.
Okay. I think we can correct that without a motion, can't we?
Yes.
Okay, that can be corrected without a motion. Apologies, we didn't catch it sooner, including last week. Any other comment at the table? Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3681.
I move to approve Resolution 3681, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Red Lodge, Montana, directing the Planning Board to review zoning designations and regulations for the city-owned Brewery Hill parcel south of Highway 78 located within the city limits.
I'll second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Tupin. Again, I'll just add that the difference between this resolution and the resolution that was out for discussion last time was that, I want to say it's number two or number three down there, that per council's direction talks about the ability to evaluate it and make recommendations to, to evaluate it as multiple parts and recommend subdividing it, if that's what makes sense. Any other discussion from the table?
I decided that I was going to look up the GEO code of that and it didn't come up, didn't come up because the GEO code starts with 10 dash and then the rest of the numbers as listed here. And the title of it, well, it kind of looks like this was written for two properties and then switched over to one. And so whereas one property have been identified, so it has been identified.
Okay, can we make those grammatical edits without a motion?
And, and then it says property one located at, and it's S27, which is good, but then O7, it should be T07.
T07, yep.
T07 South, R20 East, so the legal definition isn't exactly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
spoken from another Realtor who looks at.
We look at those a lot.
We look at it.
I, just to keep it official, can we, can we have a motion to make sure that the title accurately reflects it?
I would move that the title for the land accurately reflects both the, the tower and the range and, and the 10 dash on, on the GEO code.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to amend from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Tupin.
Yep.
Any other conversation on it or did we succeed in having a conversation beforehand?
Yes.
All right.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
We, we're, we're going to send this to Planning.
This is, we're just.
So we're going to address this again in a few weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Because I have some questions.
Few months.
Got it. Okay, I just, because I do have questions, but I'll wait till it comes back.
Yeah, this is, this is just us requesting them.
Yep.
To look at it and come back and make their recommendation on what the highest and best use of the property.
Yep. Just want to clarify.
Okay. Any, any questions on the amendment, any other discussion on the amendment? Let's go ahead and do a motion on the amendment to, to correct the title and we'll have Lonnie work with Councilmember Conley to make sure that's accurately reflected.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes, back to the main motion. Any further discussion? I think that's kind of where we picked up your conversation. Did you, did you want to throw anything out now or?
No, I, if it's coming back, it can wait.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion at the table, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on the main motion.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3682, if the motioner would, you know.
I, I move to approve Resolution, this is a short one. Resolution 3682, City Council of the City of Red Lodge Resolution Establishing a Red Lodge Pace Program.
I second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Tupin. I feel like we do have some, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rude. We have, I, discussion at the table.
Just a little bit of information from earlier today, we did have a couple of questions from the public in terms of how this would be getting financed, whether that's going to be through local banks or if there's already fiduciary establishments that can do the financing that have been pre-designated. We did get clarification that those are already in place and that the program does make referrals to those organizations and those different banks, lenders, et cetera. So we feel comfortable that there are the resources available. And after speaking with some of the folks that had those concerns, they, they're feeling very positive about moving forward.
So, so the, we had, basically, local banks had reached out and said, "Well, we don't know anything about this." And, and I believe that the, the feedback we got was, "There are other financial institutions in place, you are welcome to participate and play and request a booklet and we'll give you that information."
Yep.
But with or without joining of those local institutions, the products are available to help them do that.
Yep, so, and it's, they also said that it might be something that they would be interested in doing down the road, but there would be obviously pieces that have to go into place first. But it is something that we can move forward with and have it as an accessible tool for our, our citizens, so that's great.
All right. So, the secondary concern that had come up is to whether there was going to be a direct cost that the county need to accrue, and Lonnie had reached out and talked to Black Mountain, and then also followed up with the county, that there is not an extra module. There was a question as to any additional setup costs?
Correct, yes, so Black Mountain said no, there's no fees. I reached out to Angela, left her a message, I did not hear back.
Okay, all right.
But Black Mountain said that, because they actually verified it with, they called the county after I talked to them after the meeting.
Perfect.
Just so the council is aware of the implications of that, there was at one point an understanding that it may be, it may be like a couple of thousand dollars to make some sort of programming code in the background. The short version is if there's a direct cost that's involved with it, it is to be borne by the city. So, if it's just like staff time, clicking on seven buttons, not. But if they have to, if it's an additional purchase, much like it was with the tip, the city will bear that cost. So, I just want to make sure that the city's comfortable with that. We don't think there's going to be a cost. Yeah, I feel like that's been pretty well researched, but the potential exists that we might be wrong, but I think it's a small number wrong. Any other questions at the, discussion at the table? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and do a vote.
Need to have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. With that discussion at the table, this particular action, the mechanism that's in place, does require a public hearing on the issue. So, now that we have had our discussion, I even have an underline to remember that. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Now, this public hearing is specific to the C-Pay program. So, if you go down another trail, I'll have to ring you in. But for now, this is for the C-Pay program. And that public hearing is open. Go ahead first to the room.
Thank you, Mayor, Chair Ronning and Council. My name is Tom Cheetah. I'm here as a member of Carbon County Resource Council, a local grassroots nonprofit focused on issues around conservation, family ag, renewable energy, and local economic prosperity. We urge you to support the C-Pay program as it aligns with our organization's goal of promoting energy efficiency, clean air and clean water, and supporting local businesses. As a reminder, in Montana, there are now 18 counties with five more pending and two cities that have programs like this already. There's some great examples of projects approved and moving ahead. It's a voluntary, easy financial tool for energy efficiency and economic development. Our group with our 70-plus members strongly supports this program, and we, along with Kat, Celia, the Roosevelt, and others, have been educating and building support for a long time among businesses and community organizations. There were support letters in the packet, I think. And we're also, our organization's also committed to continuing outreach and promotion to local businesses when this is passed. Thank you very much, and I urge you to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments from within the chamber? You're recognized.
Hi, I'm Dr. Laurie Byron. I live on Highway 308 on the east bench, but I am within the city limits. I also support C-Pay. It poses zero risk to our city government. It requires a bank that's willing to do the lending, so it doesn't make anybody do anything that they don't want to do, and it doesn't cost us anything. It's what I would call a no-brainer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other in that chamber?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Asana Alsu. I live in Red Lodge. I'm a small business owner in town, and I am one of those small business owners that Tom and Kat have been reaching out to, and I support this program, and I urge you to pass the resolution.
Can I ask for a question? You're building a new building, are you, can you retrofit this into your new building?
Sure can.
Okay, great.
And that's actually a really big point, Council, including. You know, the new business owner, not new business owner, but going into expansion of my business, we're pretty tapped out in finances and resources. A program like this can give us great opportunities to invest in environmentally friendly, long-term, energy-saving cost measures without, like, having to go to the bank even more. You know, we borrow our limits. So, this would be a really great opportunity for small business owners like us.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruth. All right, any other comments from the chamber? Any comments online? Again, if you'd start by turning on your cameras, or if I see a mute that's on that goes off. Go ahead, Kathleen, you're recognized.
Thank you, I'm Kathleen Healy. I'm 70 Red Lodge Creek Road. I am representing the Roosevelt Center. I won't read everything that was already included in your packet, but I will say, we have a 100-year-old building, and then we have the new side, which is 30-plus years. There's only one technician who will work on the pneumatic heating system currently that I know of in the state. It's like us in the Gannan's Building and Billings is it. This would really help us make sure and that we can continue and lower our operation costs, which we've seen just increase tremendously with our additional hours and additional events in the building. And this is something we could do all at once. The payback, again, is on the property owner, and we would pay that back with the savings immediately. I believe our operating costs, just in utilities, are around $25,000. We've done our best with upgrades, and this would help us get us to the next track. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else online? I'm not seeing any changes in status, going once, going twice, going three times. So, go ahead and close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the table. Any follow-up discussion at the table?
It's a great program.
It looks like a great program.
All right, can we get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. At this point, we will switch over to the stuff that's in the channel, as it were. This is the opportunity for the full council to get together and discuss things that are coming up. One question I have for kind of the council as a whole, the order that we cover these follows originally was set up to match our times. If that is the case, there's an argument that would say that we ought to move land use and planning up to the first position. But I defer completely to council, if council has a preference.
I have no preference.
No preference.
Keep it the same as it is?
Oh, yeah.
All right, we'll keep it the same as it is. This is one of those things, all right. So, we will start with Council Chair Conley on public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome to go out that door if you want to, if it's locked.
They both work. We had a great presentation from Tim Ryan, Deputy Chief of Red Lodge Fire Rescue, on the adoption of the 2021 International Fire Code. The City Council will have a presentation of changes from the previous International Fire Code. Apparently, it's changed every three years, and our local fire rescue, I think he says, he does it in a three cycle. So, like, every nine years or so, they look at it again, and we're there. So, I understand that Chief Coats will be doing a presentation to the City Council on that. We had lots of questions and answers concerning the burning within city limits, as well as water supply for extinguishing fires. Obviously, because of the California fires and not having enough water to extinguish them. And he said, yes, the same would happen here. It was very educational. I thought that when they'd get to a property, they'd open up a hydrant and shoot the water out. But apparently, they show up with a 1,000-gallon water truck along with 2,000-gallon tenders, and that with foam is about 5,000 gallons of water, and they start with that, and then they go to the hydrant after that. So, that was kind of an interesting, interesting presentation. The fire department addressing, the applications were going into the fire department, and then they were sending them over to Tom Coley with the county, and now they're going to go directly to the county and Tom Coley. So, they just cut off the middle man. You'll see in your packet that Chief Schrock reported 206 calls for service in January with 39 new cases that have begun. So, our police department's been very busy. We didn't get much time to talk about the current snow ordinance. Letters have been given to those businesses along Broadway between 8th and 14th regarding snow removal. The next step is the enforcement. And I think that we have in our packet the ordinance tonight on snow removal.
So, if I may back up a little bit with a question.
Please.
On the fire department and adoption of that, are we going to have a draft ordinance? Do we have somebody who's working on the draft ordinance so that we can have a draft ordinance in two weeks?
Apparently, what he has, it has to go to the city attorney and somebody else as well. So, I don't think it's going to be in two weeks. I think more likely, unless everybody can do their work within the two weeks. So, I just suspect it's going to be about a month.
Yeah, because it was city attorney and I think state fire.
Yeah, so, probably not in two weeks.
By the way, so that the full council is aware, one of the things that's going to differ currently, so, there's a couple of categories of fires. If it's under 48 inches and you're roasting marshmallows on it, it doesn't require any sort of a permit.
In diameter.
Yeah, 48 inches in diameter. Within the county, there is an online permitting system that you go, you pay $5, and it's basically an education system. And a permit is just granted to you. We had a situation last year where somebody was doing a slash burn in preparation of a lot. It was a cheaper prep than hauling off the timber and stuff. However, so, and I got called down there. The flames were left unattended, and as me and the fire chief were sitting there discussing it, looking at the ordinance, and I talked about nuisance fires and fires where it allowed that didn't produce smoke and odors and things for the neighbors. I said, can you help fill me in on what those fires are? I'm not familiar with that kind of fire.
What kind of fire is that?
So, anyway, they are, their recommendations are including that fires larger than 48 inches will require a special permit. They will not just be done through the county permitting system. And that basically is the fire department going out and making a determination if it's going to be allowed or not allowed. Probably defaulting a lot more to, you're just going to have to factor in some additional costs to clear a site because there's too much of an impact of doing a big burn. If it's something that's going to persist for several days, the answer's probably going to be no.
Yeah.
So, that will be a change, and then the rest is just like the same thing when we adopt the IBC codes or the, you know, the building codes and stuff to do that. There's just the fire codes. Question?
No, just interesting.
Councilmember Ruth?
I mentioned this at the meeting this morning, that I'm concerned about enforcement. And I was wondering if the chief put down ordinance violation 18. I was wondering if he could break that down into what ordinances are being enforced? And if that's, because we were passing ordinances, and I want to know how they're doing with enforcement, like parking, snow.
Just for detail on that report.
Yes.
What say council?
I agree with that.
Yeah. And how do I get that message to Chief Schrock?
That's my job. So, my job is to take directives from council as a whole, which is why I'm saying that council would like that in detail.
I would think it would be great information. So, that if people say, oh, you know, you guys never enforce parking anymore, and I can say, well, here's 18 tickets they gave this floodline, so.
And I will add that in my notes at least, he did say that right now that was mostly parking tickets. But we can get that.
Yes, in public and for people like us.
Okay, thank you.
There's an additional level of breakdown that I have requested, just so council is aware, of the cases generated. I want to see a split of those that are coming to our city court versus a split of those that are going to higher courts. What that kind of tells you is, are we writing a lot of tickets for speeding? Or are we getting drugs and DUIs and felonies and stuff that are more significant? So, all right.
And I don't know if anybody can answer the question. In our snow ordinance, we've gotten a letter from Bill Foizie. Requesting, wondering why the, from the traffic circle at Third Street North, why those sidewalks are exempted from clearing the snow.
And I think he also called that interest because they're not sidewalks at this point.
But they are on the east side, at least.
Zip trip?
At least, yeah, zip trip.
My understanding is, we can go back and look, so I have that, we can go back and look at it. So, this goes back to the contract with MDOT, what the city is responsible for, but we can meet that by giving it to the associated businesses. So, we have that, and we can go and review that. But my understanding, when we reviewed that previously, is that that was not something we were obligated, that was not something we were responsible for doing.
Well, we're not going to be responsible, but it apparently.
We can make ourselves responsible.
We.
Because right now, in here, it's not.
Right now, supposedly, anything in the C1, C2, C3 North, C3 South, and C4 is involved. But then it specifically exempts that. Yet that definitely is a C3 North. And I know that there aren't sidewalks the entire way, but those businesses, those commercial businesses that have sidewalks should be clearing their sidewalks just like we do downtown. And there are people that use those.
So, to Councilmember Ronny's spot, those ordinances that you're looking at are the product of this council, so.
So, we can change that.
You can change that, going through the appropriate procedures.
And the other thing that I would like.
And I'll come back to you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're up.
Well, just, I, I know Dave, I gave Dave an earful, the mayor an earful this weekend because the state had gone through the parking area of Broadway and blew tons of heavy, hard, pat snow over my sidewalk.
And after you had cleaned it.
After I'd cleaned it, it was totally clear the night before, so I didn't go to work early because it hadn't snowed again. And I got there, and I had to shovel for two more hours. So, having this be 10 o'clock the morning after a storm is sometimes not doable. And so, I think that maybe we need to change that to noon instead of 10, because I didn't come in thinking I was going to have to shovel. So, you know, and I know that the Public Works Director is going to try to talk to MDOT about possibly slowing down a little bit when they're plowing the parking area. I mean, I have a hole in my window from a plow truck from before I moved in there.
It's happened.
Because they, you know, so.
They do, they fly.
So, that was just my suggestion, is that maybe we take out the 10 o'clock and just, you know, if we get five feet of snow, you're also not, and it quit snowing that night, you're not going to get it clear, I'm not going out at 4:00 AM to shovel. So, I'm done by 10, so.
On a whole, just looking, sorry, can you go first?
Nope, nope.
On a whole, just looking at this ordinance, I do think that there could be some good cleanup and a little bit more, again, all about criteria, and, again, cleaning up timelines. Also, just talking about this map, like, I pulled up our zoning map, and there's a lot of these areas that are technically C3 North that are generally being utilized as commercial spaces. And, but they're included within this ordinance. So, I think that it might be important just to kind of look at the map, think about our day-to-day operations, and then truly what people have been struggling with, which is, again, that exact thing that Jody's talking about with the plows coming through. I've heard that same complaint from pretty much everybody I talk to about it. And, I mean, I worry about, we talk about Brewery Hill. I mean, I look across the kitty corner to me, the fire department's obviously great at clearing their areas, they need to be. But the sidewalks coming up towards my house, and I don't have a sidewalk on my side, so am I supposed to be digging out a walkway, or?
So, right now, one of the things that we noticed as we dove into this is I did not see anything that dictated residential.
Okay. It's just commercial. But again, I just feel like that's something that is worth addressing. Because, I mean, if it is a walkway that needs to be plowed, again, I think about 78 and all the people that do come up and down that hill. But I would not expect my neighbors to blow that out because the pile that is there from the, from MDOT is insane. So, again, it's just, I do think that taking a look at this would be valuable.
Councilmember Ruth, thank you for your patience.
I know, there are two things, and I hope I can remember them. But why is, I really support plowing the side, shovel, plowing or taking care of the sidewalks north of town. We want this to be a walking town. That's why this Brewery Hill is exciting to a lot of us, and we want to encourage people to walk, walk the sands, for goodness sakes, for instance, and ultimately walk to the hospital someday in our dreams to have something all the way. But we should prepare ourselves for taking care of these spaces. And I can't remember the second thing I was going to say.
You're supposed to write it down.
But I'm all for.
Was it residence?
No, it was about, but taking care of north side of town and walking. Make it, and I'm glad Nick's here, but we have to really be proactive on walking, on making it a walking town and encouraging it. So, I also.
Councilmember Ronnie?
Sorry. Yes, I would also really like to review the, I think there is a study out there, isn't it? The trails and stuff like that, the whole walkability type thing. In that study, does it talk about the safe routes to school at all? You know, the.
About what we talked about last time.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's, having your children walk out in the street to get to a crossing guard because there's no sidewalks on either side, you know, that kind of goes back to what Chelsea says, do you need to go out and actually, you know, plow a path for the kids because there's no sidewalks on the east side of Fort Heath Street and Broadway? And that's where the crossing guard is.
Yeah.
You know, so I think there kind of needs to be maybe a higher-level conversation about how can we get sidewalks in to some of those places that are high-traffic areas? about how can we get sidewalks in to some of those places that are high-traffic areas? And then I think they would need to be, it would be part of the, the shoveling because it's right downtown. It's in that block because you're supposed to plow, shovel down to the Broadway.
Councilmember Ruud, do you have the floor?
I thought, what I was going to say.
Okay.
Um, Jody and, and others, let's wait and see if the Department of Transportation does better on plowing before we change it back, change it to noon because stores open at ten. And I think it'd be pretty beneficial to have a lot of that tackled by the time the store's open. So I'm just thinking if, um, Mike is going to talk to MDOT about being better-
Pretty, yeah, down.
And about moving on from ten, that's all I was going to say.
So, so my question that I would like to get some feedback from council on, and it gets into the enforcement side, which is the administration side. Um, you saw in the packet, I had requested from our city attorney a specific opinion that says, when is it that we can go out and fix the problem?
Right.
And, and take care of the cost? Um, there was a question about can we do that? So our ordinance currently says that you're out of compliance at ten o'clock the day after a storm has, has, has done. At ten oh one, do we send somebody out? Now, regardless of what the ordinance says, I didn't feel that was probably a good policy.
Sure.
But, but there's also a balance of by the time it's sat there for two days and it's packed down, there's a higher thing. So, so my understanding, based on the guidance we've received from council, based on looking through the ordinances, um, and doing our interpretation is that, that what we have the ability to do right now, and I said, I'm going to look to council and say, yeah, do that or hold off. So that's what it, maybe adds up of what I'm looking for. What we have the ability to do right now is at ten oh one, after the storm, go by and give them a notice. And one of the questions was, do we have to get hold of them? Can we tape it to the door? What counts?
That was one of them.
So, um, the, the, uh, attorney had basically just included a general citation. What we also want to have is more of a flyer that says, here's the code and here's the responsibility. And basically what that says is if the problem is still there at ten oh one tomorrow, again, this is just the commercial areas that are covered by the ordinance right now. At that point, the city will come in and clean it up and that bill will be on your taxes, kind of like the tall grass thing. My question to council is, are you comfortable with us moving forward and enforcing it from that level at this point? Or do you want us to hold off and kind of maintain the status quo of, of just asking why you guys rework it and come up with something new?
Well, I had the same question because the attorney's letter says the owner has twenty-four hours from receiving the warning. And I know that the, the businesses that traditionally don't do anything, they're not there.
And, and his response was, if we put it there at ten oh one, that ten oh one, the next day, we can do it.
So if we post it.
If we posted it, that counted.
So receiving equals posting.
Posting equals meets the requirement, what his is.
And they've also received the letter. Everyone has received the letter.
The warning letter, correct.
I, I don't know that everyone has received that right now, so that's-
It was sent out.
Did it go to the owner of the building or did it go?
What they've been doing is they've been handing it out to people that aren't in compliance.
Oh.
Oh.
Did you, did you get one at the market automatically? I think it's just been those that are out of compliance right now.
Oh, I thought every business owner was going to get a copy of that letter.
That's part of this conversation, so, so.
Okay, so this has, this has in here, the first offense is a warning. The second, then it's, it's, you know, a big fifty bucks, which is about what it costs you to-
But, but there's a parallel sidetrack, which is the cost of cleanup in addition to. So it's a warning, but you could still be paying for it.
Yeah, okay, I-
And that's going to, and, 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 and so by the way, so a little bit of the background behind this conversation was a discussion of should we be doing this from a city standpoint? Should we buy the equip- and by the way, we'd have to outsource it. We don't have, you know, the priority of our road crews is out cleaning roads and doing what they're doing right now. So if this was going to be done in real time at that same timeframe, it would have to be done. We'd have to outsource or give that to somebody else to do that.
I happened to talk to somebody this morning just about that and he said it'd be about fifty bucks.
What, per bill, per business?
Per business.
Yeah, and, 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 and there are several businesses that have reached out, have, that are talking to different folks about seeing if they can do that. Cause, cause I'll, I'll be honest, I would prefer to see the business community take care of this themselves. And it'll ultimately be cheaper for them to get together and hire somebody to come and do it than if the city gets involved and we add administrative costs to them.
Yeah, I don't-
So, so that's, that's, that has been my stated preference since day one here. But, but as we talked about that, that the pushback from, from our Public Works Director, and he was accurate, was you haven't given, enforcing what we have on the books, a chance to work. The, the working assumption being that about the time somebody gets the bill for that the first time or the second time, they clear up their snow going forward. And by the way, so does everybody else on the block because it, the word is out now that we are now enforcing the ordinance that is there.
Personally, I, I do want what we have on the books enforced.
Okay, are you comfortable with as I explained?
Yeah, I, I think as, as it is right now, I just, you know, I mean, yeah, if I, you know, if I get a, a note because I didn't expect snow, you know, it'll, it'll be done before you have to come and do it.
And the officers have, have the, 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 as they do with all things, the discretion. So I specifically talked about the case of, you know, somebody's cleared the walks and the snowplow is there. They're like, we're not going to write him a ticket for that. That would be, you need to get this taken care of before tomorrow at, at this time.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
So, so let me do a quick straw poll. Let's go around. Councilmember Daniels, your thoughts?
I think, I don't think the city needs to, to put their hands in this yet. I think let's enforce what we have.
Well, the enforcement is the city putting our hands in it.
Well, no, but like-
You mean not doing the work?
Yeah, not doing the work, like that's-
Other than if they're out of compliance and we cause it to be cleaned up?
And then, yeah, and then we have to, yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so, yes?
Yes, enforce what we have.
Enforce it per the letter from the attorney whilst you guys look at it and, and make some tweaks to it, but enforce what we have.
Correct.
Okay, councilmember Conley?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ronnie?
Um, yes, enforce what we have. Um, I still think we should, I think we could have a discussion about the city purchasing a piece of equipment similar to the one I, uh, that was sent to me in the YouTube video. Just drive down it and it sweeps up and blows the snow away.
Yeah.
Cause it would, it would, it would make it so it's consistent everywhere and possibly save a lot of time.
By way of information, um, the Pollard has purchased one that makes that one look like a baby.
Yeah.
And, uh, I have invited him to reach out if he'd like to go test it out on our sidewalk and stuff.
Yeah, so I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not opposed to having, having that discussion. Resort tax committee has, um, said that that would be a, 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 a use of, an, an allowed use of resort tax.
Councilmember Tupe, and the question is, enforce per the attorney's letter while you guys work on the tweaks?
Yeah, I think that that is absolutely something that should be getting done. And I think the letter seems reasonable, especially if they have received warnings.
Councilmember Ruud?
You probably want a yes or no answer, but of course I will give you one. What, what if the new thing, the thing we tweaked is really different and then, I mean-
Then we'll change how we enforce it. The question is, are we going to do nothing until then other than say, hey, would you please clean up your sidewalk?
Well, they know that we're coming back with another round of information or, you know?
I, I think things are always subject to change. So, I mean, that's, that's, I would, I would say that's a given.
They'll say, well, a month ago, we did this.
Well, the likelihood of us having it completed by the end of the season is-
Yeah, yeah.
Like, you know how government orders require two readings and take time.
Yeah, I'll say yes.
We're going to, councilroot is a, is a yes on the straw. And councilmember Miller?
Well, yes, uh, obviously enforce what's on the book. Be careful, you know, you're trying to put black and white rules to mother nature. And that doesn't work.
Yep, yep.
And so you, you, you're not going to be able to quantify and say, ten o'clock, I'm sending something out. But you know, it might, it might have a little flurry till the next, then are you going to start over? So I'm just saying be-
The way it's written, it does. So if it, if it, if it quits snowing at ten thirty, the next day, ten o'clock, you're, ten, when you're out of compliance.
But mother nature's not like that. She only cut it off for our rules. They could linger all day. It could go to the next day. You could stop and they could start. I mean, how are you going to put words to that? That's, so anyhow, don't want to go off on a tangent. Let's just all agree that let's enforce what we got.
So, so let me, let me add a tweak based on council Miller's, councilmember Miller's input. As we go through with this, we're only going to go through with this when it's black and white. If it's gray and fuzzy, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to err on the side of, of-
Black and white.
Reasonable, which I think is-
How are we going to express that to the public?
Well, just, it's when we do it. I mean, yeah.
There has to be some-
If it, if it's been clear for three days and you haven't touched it, you're getting a note.
There you go.
I mean, if, if we get a four or five foot dump like we do sometimes in April, I mean, I don't think you're going to go out there at ten o'clock that day and say, why isn't your sidewalk cleared?
No, it, it, like I said, it'll be the discretion. And so whether this is, whether this is me or whether this is, we're achieving, we're achieving, we're going to do that.
It's a lot of common sense involved. Good luck.
All right. Is there any, is there any additional tweaks or guidance council would like to give with me? I think I feel comfortable with, with the guidance that I received. All right, uh, council, council chair Conley, um, we, we kind of jumped in and did snow before you were, I want to make sure you get a chance to wrap things up.
That was where I ended too.
Okay.
That was where we ended as well.
All right, any other questions for public health and safety? One, one of the things, by the way, that is just by way of information, and, and so you can all be taking a sneak peek at it. Um, we did not get to it at all today, but trash is on there. If you go look at our current trash ordinances, it says that every single can, every single trash receptacle in the city will be an airtight, sealed, bear-proof container.
Nice.
I will tell you, the city is in violation right now. We have a construction dumpster next door that is neither bear-proof. And so there was an intent, I know there was a, uh, some work that was done on one that, that may have some salvageable parts for it that didn't get passed. But I would like to propose to council that we have something that's not reasonably enforceable and that leaves us in a weak position. So if we have, if we have members of the community that reach out and, and say officers are electing not to enforce something because if the request is not reasonable, I would like to see that one worked out sooner than later as well, so that we can do that. So that's also on public health and safety.
And if you try to find trash ordinance, it doesn't work. It's actually under nuisances.
Yeah.
It's, it's like way down the list on nuisances. That's where garbage is. So public health and safety and then go to nuisances.
Okay. All right, let us go to councilmember, council chair Ronnie for admin.
Well, most what we, um, talked about in admin and finance, we already did, so. Um, but you will see in your packet, the, um, main thing that we want to talk about tonight with you all is ordinance eight fifty-two dash second amendment, city council awards boundary relocation. And, um, Crystal, how did you?
Rosio.
Rosio, yeah, Rosio. Came to our meeting today. Um, it's required by law that our wards be, um, as close to the same population as possible. And that is not happening right now due to the growth of Ward one up on the golf course and the spires.
The west bench in general.
The west bench in general. So in your packet is, um, the county, um, is also at this time will be redoing the precincts. And there is a map in there showing the boundary differences. Um, and there was putting, the way they changed it, anything east of Highway two twelve is going into Ward two. And then anything west of two twelve that, it will stay in Ward one.
So, so some of the weird logistics behind it. The county has to do a resolution. The municipality has to do an ordinance, which means we will have two public hearings of it because there's two readings of it. There is a requirement of a mailing that goes out to all of the impacted parties. The, and that's post after the fact, so it's not pre. The good news is, is that because the county is changing their precincts to align and match the same time as our zones, the city does not have to encounter any cost in that mailing. The county will send it out and says, you're now in a new precinct, you're now in a new ward. Um, the deadline, where we want to move this forward is so we'll have this up for action at, at the next meeting.
There'll be ordinance.
It, pardon?
It's an ordinance though, so it'll be two.
Yeah, it'll be an ordinance. So the first reading will be at the next meeting, which is the first in February. The second one will then be the first meeting in March, which it then kicks in thirty days later, which is actually, yeah, so actually we'll be all right there. So because the, the biggest concern is that the legal requirement is that we have to be done a hundred days before the primary, which is in September, not an issue. However, there is also a desire to have it done prior to when people start to sign up for elections, which is April nineteenth this year. So, so we're going to just, and so the problem is we'll have both of our readings done, but then there's a thirty day streaming timeframe before it kicks in. And I think if we do the second meeting in February and the first meeting in April, we're actually done before that, or March, um, then it's the first of April it's in, so we still meet the deadlines. And, and if there's a, a delay in that, what they do is let's, let's say Doug, and, and this is a good thing to bring up. So Doug is currently in Ward one and he is a, um, a member, he is the, the Ward one representative. He will complete his term as the Ward one representative. However, if councilmember Miller elected to run again, he would have to sign up as a Ward two for, for the new season. But he completes his current term. He was elected within Ward one while Ward one existed. If we were to get delayed, what would happen is he would go in and sign up and they would say, well, you're signing up for Ward one, but so that you know, day after tomorrow, we're going to change this to Ward two because you're now signing up for Ward two as opposed to Ward one. So there's, if, if we get it done before that starts, it's cleaner. It looks like we have the ability to do that now. Um, and so, and, and it's just the existing ordinance that was done, we're just amending. It will actually put Ward two slightly ahead of Ward one. But part of this is that the, the elections administrator has, has looked into a critical ball and said, where's the growth going to happen and this should get us through for a few more years. Um, there was a question, at what point do we add more wards as opposed to splitting it up? Um, and if we were to add more wards, it would be, have to go to the voters because it's in our charter. So, um, but, but one of the things that was kind of interesting is as we look at the potential of annexation. So for instance, if we were going to annex, um, Remington Ranch, that might make sense to send that to the voters and say that that's a fourth, that's a, that's a fourth ward that, that represents it. But otherwise we have to come back and adjust our boundary games and, and start doing that. So it was, it was an interesting kind of sidebar about things that can, could relate to that. Any other homework or questions you want us to chase? I think today there was a lot of good questions that came up and we chased, we were kind of, because we were getting two different legal answers and it turns out counties and cities have different rules.
Of course.
Different sections of code that, that had different prescriptions. But I think we've got it all hammered out, so that'll be on for action next time.
Perfect. So, and I just wanted to point out though, that these, um, populations are based on, um, the twenty-twenty census and that's already five years old. So I would have a feeling that these numbers-
Did she, I thought she did it based on registered-
Voting? The voters.
Was it? Okay, because, okay.
I think she went on census, but I think it was twenty-twenty two.
Okay, because she has pursuant to the twenty-twenty census, so.
Oh, that is-
That being said, I think she did also say that likely down the road, we're going to have to readjust again anyhow.
Right. It's, it's, I mean, this was-
Specifically for Ward three.
Yeah, she just, she just said pursuant to the twenty-twenty census, the following population is included in each respective ward. And Ward one had seven hundred and ninety-three, Ward two was only five hundred and eighteen. That's almost three hundred people different. And, um, considering the growth of that's the west bench right now, I think it's even more than that.
And what happens when spires gets fully built?
So, so, yeah, that's, so, so that's one of the things that they are constantly looking at and evaluating. And I know we had this conversation when I was on council that it is actually initial, but it wasn't, it wasn't a trigger. It's not like you do this because there's five difference. But when you're looking at two or three, when you're looking at twenty, thirty percent difference, then, then, then you do that. And I, I think she's done a, put forth a good effort into the, the solution that makes sense.
I'm, I'm just saying, I think that those populations, I mean, I think it works.
Two, two years ago, I thought they were just going to move the block, the, you know, move it north a block or two. But this, this looks like it'll last a little bit longer.
Okay, is everybody good with having that next time? Okay, all right. Councilman Doug, did we have anything else with admin and finance that you want to share about?
Not particularly, um-
I think that was the gist of it.
That was a big part of the meeting and we have some other things that we will be working on, but that's for future meetings.
There was some conversation on resort tax.
Oh, yeah, that's actually included.
Um, and, and so next Tuesday is the resort tax meeting, just so you know, they are working on the ordinance. There's a couple of things we're looking at. Um, one of them is just helping define what does require sales tax, what doesn't. There's a couple of, there's a, there's a particular, resort tax, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Sales tax.
Yeah, resort tax thing, ooh.
Yeah, don't be there.
Um, so resort tax, um, and so we're just trying to look at that. And basically everything that's ever come up is a, and, and, and agreement. So, um, items that are taxed, trying to make that list more clear. I'm opening a new business, do I need to, do I not need to? I'm, I, I do tours, but I, all my sales happen online, which is excluded. But I'm picking up everybody at Pride Park, for instance, within the city. Um, they have to have a business license and, and so far everybody we've talked to has said, yes, that they need to have a resort tax, particularly to look at what the intent of resort tax is. But when you said, tell me why, then they kind of went, uh, eve, eve, that. So that'll be a discussion Tuesday as well as the items.
And what time is that meeting Tuesday?
Five thirty.
Five thirty here.
And the public is welcome to that as well.
Yes.
Um, and it is noticed, so council can come to that. Um, the other thing is, uh, that they're looking at is, is, um, appeals, but also the administration cost. So right now, the, the, that two hundred and fifty dollars and stuff doesn't go into-
General fund.
It, it goes, it goes into resort tax, it doesn't go into general fund, so it doesn't help really cover the cost of doing it. But my under- help really cover the cost of doing it. But my understanding is that's because of how our ordinance is written, so we can probably change that. So we've got attorneys working on that, but that's, but that's something that's kind of significant and impactful to the town.
So we were, hopefully we'll have that, um, up for discussion with council in March? Sometime, probably the end of March.
I would say timeframe, we really want to make sure we have it done in place before June, so that as businesses are renewing, we can get that information out.
Yep.
Uh, there was also an additional thing that came up of what about businesses that are not accurately identifying which items are taxable and not taxable. We have one or two, we have one specifically in town that, that's kind of, and so what is, what is the city's role in that? And, you know, right now we just get in the list, but if we, if we, whether it be somebody from the resort tax committee or, or, uh, you know, somebody from the front office that kind of goes down and says, yes, 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 no, 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 just kind of making sure that we have a process in place to help correct that when, when we become aware of it. One of the other things kind of in that administrative ordinance is, is kind of factoring audits in there so we can do audits and, and give them paper as well.
So, and, and we did also talk, um, a little bit, um, I guess it might have been after the meeting, but, um, I just want to really say that, um, all of our standing committees really, really appreciate input and having our department heads at the meeting.
Huge.
And, um, we really appreciate Mayor Davis being there because he, um, you know, it just really helps steer the committee, uh, make sure we're on the right track, sure we're not going off onto some tangents somewhere that, and then also he, he helps, um, with the summation of what we talked about.
I think what I'm, and to kind of piggyback on that, one thing that I do appreciate when we have just truly as many people involved as possible, but one nice thing is getting to know what's happening with city staff and that comes directly from the mayor to where we can make sure that when there are issues with city staff, whether it's criteria for certain ordinances and how things are handled, we make sure that that's something that's actually getting addressed and not just lingering out there in the universe to where, you know, if there's complaints coming in from the public to the city, because there's something that's of issue within city business, it's something that can now be resolved. So I think that's really important to just keep those relationships. And again, want to emphasize, public should always, I would love to see public involved in the, the standing committee meetings and it's truly where.
That's where all the excitement happens.
Yeah, it is. And it's, and it's truly where the biggest difference can be made and it's where we can actually have open discussions and collaboration with more parties.
And when there is a problem, the standing committee is where we can decide, is the ordinance the issue or, you know, does the mayor need to, you know, take what?
Get on the stick and take care of it.
Yeah, and, and force it. Enforce it's already there, so.
Yep.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate those invitations. I, I do my best to, to respect and refer to the council chairs and I said, that's your meeting, I'm a guest at those, but I do appreciate the invite.
We appreciate the input for sure. Okay.
All right.
None more?
Council Chair Cupen, Land Use and Planning.
Committee Chair.
Committee Chair, sorry.
I don't like that response.
Vice, Vice President Miller.
Um, so, yeah, a lot of what we talked about at Land Use and Planning has been covered, whether it was, was within action items or in the mayor's reports. Uh, one thing that we were specifically speaking towards was the use of Pride Park. Um, as of now, we do have use applications for the, for our parks, whether that's Lions Park, Pride Park, Rotary Park, et cetera. People wanting to have events or, uh, get togethers, what have you. Um, so we do have those applications in place, but there has been concerns brought to the attention of the council, uh, of the use of Pride Parks specifically, because it is so frequently used for a seating area, a shading area, and just really important for the folks that are using, walking downtown to be able to have a space to sit and relax. Uh, so one thing that we will be opening up is creating, potentially creating policies of how that park is utilized, um, whether that is minimal use, blacked out dates. We're really open and having that discussion at this point, but that is one that we will be, uh, hitting head on at the next meeting. And one thing that, just to put out to the, the public that is here, all, all four of you, um, if, we'd love feedback on that. That's a really big one to hear what the community is saying of how they feel about Pride Park and how they would like to see that utilized. So that's really it that I have for that.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for Land Use and Planning from the rest of council?
And I do.
Council member Root?
You know it's going to be changed, the park, but Public Works is going to rearrange it.
Well, the, you have the redoing the, the feature, it's going to be.
I did not know that. So this is where public feedback's really good.
I would be in contact with Mike Maples.
That's a great call, yep.
Because he's going to, they're all going to.
I, I think the concerns about the park are probably is going to be as valid, but so what they're looking at is like the ties, the railroad ties and stuff, life limited and aging out, so like replacing. And so I don't know that, well, we'll get some designs in, um, but I don't, I don't know that it, it, it's not going to change the fact that it's still that respite spot in the middle of town.
Sure. But it might change.
Put an area around there?
But that does actually really help to know that because, I mean, if we are talking, okay, we're allowing some sort of public use, but in minimal capacity, if that capacity changes based off design, then that could completely eliminate that conversation. So that is helpful and I thank you for that. Um, I'll reach out to Mike and see if he can have a conversation, maybe he'd be willing to come.
Or, or council member Root too, is that, because that's part of the parks discussion. So they're just, you can, she can keep you updated as I develop.
Yeah, I'm excited for that. Um, but yeah.
They're, they're doing a, they're doing a design, you know, basically a, like an engineering design on a kind of the equivalent of, of the other stuff we've done. Come back and tell us what it's going to cost and how we're going to accomplish it.
Awesome.
And, and just for the record, the, the group that the MOU is with, uh, I don't want to get their name wrong, but the Garden Club is, is very much part of that conversation.
Yep. No, absolutely. Thank you. So, yeah, that's, these are the, the people we want to, part of the reason we didn't want to put any groundwork down today is because we want to get that public input in place, so.
All right. And then lastly, uh, Public Works will look to council, or to chair, committee chair Ronnie.
Yes, okay. Um, well, I guess.
Who also happens to be.
I know, I am. Okay. So, um, well, let's just go into what we have up for discussion because there are two really big things and, um, they're very important. Um, in your packet, you have the RFP for the solid waste collection and disposal. Um, it is up for discussion. Um, today we talked about, um, a couple of different things, specifically, um, the weighting. This is really, a lot of this is from the last RFP that was out there. There, um, like the, the capability, number two, the capability to meet time and project budget requirements, currently only weighted ten percent. We figured that that probably needed to be a lot higher percent. I think Michael's going to put that at fifty percent. There are a couple of things that, um, he is going to probably take out of those, um, weighting things, like the use of very distant containers. It.
Just to pass fail to requirement.
Yeah, to pass fail to requirement. It's like you doing that is not ten percent of whether you're going to get the contract or not. It's like, no, you have to do it, period. So that's going to come out of there. Um, you want to hit it away here?
The, the only thing I want to add that says discussion here, which I know a lot of times means that it's going to be coming for council for action. Um, this is actually, it doesn't require councils, we, we get to put this up for RFP and the, and the goal is to do it as soon as possible. Ideally, like I said, like to just go out by the end of the week. Um, but having said that, when we put a contract in place, it's going to require the approval of council. So this is where I would like your input, if you think, and, and even if you go home tonight and didn't get a chance to look through that or without the context, it didn't mean anything, um, if you have any feedback that you'd like to get in, if you would please shoot that to Lonnie and me and Mike or any combination thereof, we'll try to get that worked into the, to the RFP before it goes out. Council member Conley?
Yeah, I did have a, a note when I read through this contract, that the city shall act as the collector for services by providing a more guaranteed form of payment through an assessment of tax rolls.
Oh, well, one of, that's in the contract or is that in the RFP?
In the RFP.
Okay, thank you. We will.
And, and right below that, the header was RFQ instead of RFP. Here, I'll give this to you. Who wants it?
Um, we'll say utility billing versus taxes.
Yes.
Good catch. We've, we've had several sets of eyes on it and we haven't picked that up yet.
Yes. Are you ready? Any other comments on this, guys?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, I, I, Mike had some great, you know, he's had a lot of experience doing these, um, so the, the county was from before they actually collected their own garbage, so, you know, I have full confidence in him and, you know, the mayor moving forward with this RFP, so. Okay. All right. Um, and then we have the Bear Tooth Industries contract, recycling center. Um, apparently the current contract actually expired in June.
Last year sometime.
Yeah. So, um, and they cannot work without a contract, so.
We, we feel better with them working with a contract.
Yeah, so, um, but this is basically last year's contract, except for they are asking for a twenty-five cents an hour wage in the city.
Which is, which is reflected in that. We did confirm that.
Um, but I want everybody to know that these people are not actually getting the seventeen dollars and some cents an hour, because that's a weighted amount, because they're paying, you know, they have their own workers comp, they have their own payroll expenses and things like that. That's the cost of the center having those people there.
Yep.
So when you think, gosh, they're making, you know, I don't make that. It's like, well, no, that's the weighted amount.
Yeah, but you own your own business.
I know, I don't make anything. So, yeah.
You're on a private.
And then, um, we had a, a quick discussion, um, at, right after the meeting, um, Anna and I did. And, um, it says that they will be paid till two o'clock and there's some days where, um, they're not working straight through two. So we'd kind of like something in the contract to say that a maximum of whatever.
Four hours.
Four hours, but they will be paid on the actual time that they're there, if we could do that. And I think that.
I think you said no later than two o'clock.
No later than two o'clock. Yeah.
And, and one of, one of the concerns I had going into this is I'm still really hoping and pursuing to trying to, to tie our solid waste and our recycling more closely together. Um, and so one of the questions I had when this first was brought up is I don't necessarily want to sign a contract that goes for another year if we're going to have a different picture in three months with our solid waste. And this one actually has a, a call in there with, it's a relatively short, I want to say it's two weeks. It's basically a two weeks notice. So, so if we do come up with a, like I said, the, the goal is to meet our solid waste needs and also to meet our recycling needs. Um, and so we will utilize whichever resources we can put together the best puzzle for that.
And I had a question since I'm not really familiar too much with the whole recycling. Um, Bear Tooth Industries and here says the contractor shall arrange for someone to supervise the two employees under the contract, no charge to the city. So there's actually three from, uh, Bear Tooth Industries, a supervisor and two employ, and two employees. Yep.
Do we know is that a volunteer position that's doing the supervising right now, council member?
Well, they, uh, when you say supervise, they're not on, uh, locate, they're not on site. They, they're, they walk over from the building to, to check on.
Welfare.
Welfare, medicine, that kind of thing, but they are not sitting there. And then I would say Kyle is, bless his heart, is supervising on site and he's not getting paid anything. But he keeps track of their hours.
Is, is he strictly a volunteer position?
No, 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 no.
No, he's a paid position.
He's paid by us, but not, he's not paid by Bear Tooth Industries.
In, in this contract, they say that they will have, that Bear Tooth Industries will provide a supervisor on site.
Okay.
And they're currently only, they're not doing that. Kyle is doing that, is what she's saying.
No, what I, what I heard is they are checking on, they are not supervising their work, but they are assessing other needs and checking in.
They're checking in. Let's put it that way. They're checking in. So maybe that word supervise needs to be.
Because the contract says supervise and they're not doing that.
And I think if I'm hearing you correctly, the real act there is to make sure that the supervisor that we are paying.
The city.
Is, and, and that, is that, is that a position getting benefits, Lonnie?
It's a part-time position.
So it's a part-time position. Is, the, the question is making sure that that position isn't being asked to provide supervisory duties beyond standard supervisory duties. Not any special needs duties. Is that, am I understanding the question properly? Am I reading something different than what you were trying to say? Council member Ronnie?
Um, just, if the, if the contract is saying that Bear Tooth Industries will provide a supervisor.
Your, your reading is that that means there?
There. Yeah. Because I've, I've, I've seen that when I've worked in restaurant industry. You know, they've had a supervisor there with the person.
Yeah, you've seen someone in a restaurant, like, my supervisor's at home, but he's still getting paid, that'd be awesome.
Yeah. No, but I, but I mean, they, they will hire a Bear Tooth Industries person to come and work and, and when they, there's different levels that they can work at. And there's some that need direct oversight versus some that.
So, so what we need to do is make sure that that paragraph accurately reflects.
Yes.
And council will sign off on that before we do that, so that feedback.
So we're, we're running, I mean, they're not working under a contract, so I don't want what happened last time where we're going back and forth with Bear Tooth Industries and it's four months later and we still don't have a contract.
And there's no guarantee, it may still happen.
Yes.
But, but, but if you would mark up your copy and, uh, and, and get those, that input in, you, if you want to stick it in my box or, or get it to Lonnie, either one, we'll make sure we take that into account as we go in.
Okay.
I think, my understanding is, have we already given that back to them at this point? Or no, because?
I gave her a copy of what you guys got.
Oh, oh, okay.
I have not heard back from their.
Okay, so we can.
So she doesn't have the corrections we've made tonight about the time and all that.
No, no.
No, no. Anything we're talking about tonight, she does not have yet. But she has the same starting document that you guys do. And the goal there is to help not have a four months back and forth.
Yeah, because according to this, the contractor is supposed to be, um, keeping track of the hours. And right now, our employee is keeping track of the hours.
Okay.
They give them, there's a sheet, um, you know, the spreadsheet kind of thing and Kyle's doing that out.
So get, get your markups in and you don't have to wait until next meeting. If you want to, like I said, if you want to stick them in my box, what we'll do is we'll scan them and get them sent out.
Yeah, I mean, we have to be careful about Kyle supervising their people because then they become an employee of the city.
Yeah, that's, that's, there's, there's a whole bunch of contractor versus Bear Tooth stuff there. Yep. Noted, thank you.
Anybody else have anything else?
Any other comments for Public Works?
Um, well, just, we did talk about, um, the CIP will hopefully be in, um, and you already touched on that, um.
Yeah, we'll have that in, we'll have, it'll be a draft version, but it'll be in the packet next time.
Yes. Um, and we'll also be, there'll be things like the resolutions for the EDA grant coming up. Um, we'll have an MOU coming up, I guess, for the, um, stream bank.
No, so the, so just to clarify that, you guys won't sign off on that. There's, there's an MOU, but it's basically for, this is for the bank project down on Ninth. Um, what happens is, and, and I've reached out and I've been in direct contact with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, permitting, as we've all learned from the last, from December of twenty twenty-two is huge and a big deal. Um, and there's like, I want to say nine property owners, it might be eleven or thirteen, but the goal is we want to have one permit just because of simplicity and everything that goes through. And so there's an MOU that's basically just between me as mayor and the individual property owners, that they give us the right to, to, to do the permit and tell people they can go on their property to do the work. So it, it doesn't actually, it's not one of those things that comes to you guys to have to approve it. It just will be, that it's just one of the mechanisms that seems to be the easiest one to use. It's basically just a contractor and, and access agreement. We had something similar, like when they need to get on and do that phase one and phase two at the Rocky Fork Inn, we just give somebody right to get access because there's multiple people. So that one won't be coming to you guys.
And then, um, on two nineteen is the first meeting with the EDA grant.
Yep.
So that is moving forward, so that's good. That's the news.
And, and there may, like I said, that's the one, there may be some byproducts. But there's a little bit of a concern as long as it took. Um, what we don't want to do, there was a, a decision made at the city level, administration level, working with Mike, we don't want to mess up two summers. If we're not going to get it done this year, if there's not a reasonable chance we're going to get it done this year, we'll wait and do it next year and be prepared as opposed to rip up half a town one day and then the other half the next, the next year.
And the mayor already talked about, um, we will be, um, at the next meeting, getting ready to adopt the feasibility study for the Brewery Hill. Will that be out for, um, council to review?
It's going to hopefully be online before the end of this week. It'll be on, what I'll do is make a note to send you guys an email of it specifically.
Thank you.
But, but if you go online and, and it's a website and search for Brewery Hill, um, you'll jump to that page. Like I said, the difference is that hopefully by the end of the day, even tomorrow, but certainly by the end of the week. I did, like I said, just knowing what it looked like last time I went through it and Nick went through it, we were identifying all sorts of big consistencies, but that was a, that was the first draft. This is supposedly the final paper, so just once we've confirmed that it's good, then it'll be out.
Okay. All right. Are you excited? Leave anything out?
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Okay.
Correspondence, it was already mentioned, the letter we got from, um, Mr. Foisey. Any Any other correspondence that folks would like to share?
There has been some correspondence regarding the short-term rentals, but I think that I'll hold it until we get back into the short-term rental.
Oh, thanks.
So, no point in doing it now.
All right, now don't look like you're Russian, because we're going to get to the public comments, and we want them to know that we are here. So, at this point, we'll open up for public comment. This is for anything within the city's purview, you'll have three minutes to be heard by council. We'll go ahead and open public comment. Looking at the chamber, we'll turn to online. Anybody online, if you'd like to turn on your camera or switch your mute button or status? Nick, did you have anything you wanted to say to group?
Nancy?
Nope, all right, we'll go ahead. Going once, going twice, going three times, hearing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. And I will look to our newest council member for a motion on.
I, I have, I have something that I'd like to.
Oh.
Also in the packet was resort tax collections report. And I had someone ask me, how come gambling isn't called out, because they also pay tax?
No. No.
It's a state tax, they pay to the state.
There's a state tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we do receive money for gambling, but it's not through resort tax.
It's not resort tax.
No, it's, it's, it's a state tax.
I probably misunderstood what he, what kind of tax he was talking about.
It's, it's a state tax.
But he was all, he was, that's what he wanted to know.
Yeah, no, it's a resort tax.
I guess they changed the, the way the city gets the gambling money. I guess it used to be a split between state, county, and city, and now they've changed that. So the city gets even less.
Yeah, we don't get very much for gambling.
I'm going to stop gambling.
If you don't win it.
Councilmember Ruth, as you were.
I'm going to move to New Jersey.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all. Thanks for the public that, that's joined us and stuck with us.
Yeah.
And thank you all for.